We're at 6:16 and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you guys all want to mute and rise if you care to, I will recite. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." So our first matter here is to step into executive session for about 15 minutes. And I believe, Mike, you might have a motion for that.
Yes, indeed. I move to go into executive session at 6:17 PM pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigating position of a public body and the chair so declares, Unit A and Unit C. Executive session will include school committee and Superintendent Downing, school committee member. Brett Collins will be excused from executive session due to a conflict of interest. The school committee will then return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session.
I will second that. And indeed, do declare discussion of strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if in an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body for Unit A and Unit C. So let us take a vote on the motion. Steve?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Amy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And Sean?
Yes.
All right, Nikki, we will be back in around... Let me get my documents in order here. Here we go. So tonight, we have no citizens' comments. So we will move past that to the consent agenda. And Amy, did you have something to say about the consent agenda?
Uh, no, that's okay.
Okay. All right, so Mike, would you like to read the motion for the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda of March 9, 2022, contain the meeting minutes of March 1, 2022, and the FY '23 budget hearing minutes of March 1, 2022, as well as the warrants of March 11, 2022.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Rich. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, we shall vote on the consent agenda. I vote yes. Joe?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And Steve?
Yes.
I think I got everybody. Kirk, did you let Alida know that we're back? Or could you? Thanks, Mike. So the next matter of business here is our superintendent update. So Kirk, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Kirk, you're on mute.
You're on mute.
You guys missed the best speech, the best opening I've ever given. It was so good. No, I was, I was simply saying, relative to recent superintendents' reports with some of the topics we've covered, tonight's is going to feel very brief. So I, I think you, you all may be appreciative for that. But important things nonetheless. I, I do want to report to you that prior to the break, we had our three days of visioning with Dr. Frank Locker, our educational planner, Skanska, and Castle Booze for the Neshoba Regional Building Project. It was an amazing three days of work where we really took a deep dive into core values and things that are important to us, how that relates to building planning. The highlight of the entire three days were the students. I had a debrief with Dr. Locker today. And he could not have complimented the students more and just thought their impact in the room was amazing. So with that, our, our next steps are, Dr. Locker takes all the stuff that we generated from the various activities we did over those three days and will be taking the educational plan and updating and growing the educational plan that came out of Dr. Foster. And then that will then be presented to the architects. And the architects will be working, and they were present for the entire process. They'll be working to do initial schematics, the draft schematics, as part of the feasibility study. I'll remind the committee, it is not a new high school building study. It's a feasibility study where the architect's responsibility is to present the options to the MSBA. And that is a total new construction, an add reno, just a reno, or even looking at a site exploration of different places. So there's, it is part of that, that objective element of the process to ultimately get that in front of the MSBA. And that will be done June 27th, if I recall. Attorney Gleason, that is our earmark date for submission. So that was really, really exciting. And, and I do want to thank Attorney Gleason for joining us for all three days. We, we, and, and also Ms. Pock was on that committee. Mr. Gleason came on his own accord. He sat at the bullpen table with Alida during the visioning sessions. And, and so I enjoyed the sidebars we were able to have. And, and Sharon, you were deep in it with your table group as we went through all the various activities. So it was exciting work. The second item on my report this week is just, it's a nice announcement that I think hits sort of those themes of sustainability and renewable energy. The town of Lancaster has been working for a while and has been awarded some grant funds and some incentives to install 10 charging stations for electric vehicles, of which they're going to place those charging stations in the parking lot of Mary Rollinson and Luther Burbank School. And so it was, it was a great deal. And if I, I remember the memo I received, it's $130,000 project. It's town of Lancaster ultimately had to pay just over $20,000 for because there was over $100,000 in grant funds and incentives to pay for the cost of this project. So it really was a no-brainer in terms of bringing this in. So I think it sets the standard for what we want in particularly in our municipal and school building facilities to promote electrical vehicles and alternative energy to fuel, which frankly, given current conditions in our world right now, I, I think is going to be more and more popular. I will readily admit, I drove my electrical vehicle today. I scalded my, my daughter's car while she's away at college and it is an EV to take advantage of, of, of that right now. So very excited about that. It should be coming in the coming months. And there will be some limited disruption to traffic, but should not disrupt the daily flow of what happens at the school. So very excited about that. Our third item today is around the transitioning to flexible masking this week. Love to share with the committee that I spent my morning at the high school today, opening my day, had a chance to interact with a lot of the faculty and staff there, interacted with a lot of students. I'm, I'm happy to report, A, the morale is high, it's strong. But I'm also happy to report that as, as this transition happened, the faculty and staff and the students did a nice job of just easing in, of, of not making it some, an extraordinary event or, or some, a landmark that, that we should write down as this was the moment in time. So I think it's been handled quite well in that transition. I will say, as I talk to people, I ask, hey, have you seen or heard of anything bubbling? And almost every group that I spoke to said, no, haven't seen, haven't heard a word. I did interact with a couple of people that did talk about they'd seen some online things about it from both pers- from both perspectives, to mask and to not unmask, that, you know, sort of had that, that hint or that smell of shame to it. So we're just going to continue to monitor that and see if anything grows of that. As it was expressed to me, it was sort of non-eventful, but, but somebody did see something out there about that. A student reported that. So what I will say is overwhelmingly, it's gone well. As I touched base with all the principals, the very first day back, they estimated anywhere from ten percent to maybe a third of a classroom, depending on which room they were in, self-selected to wear their masks. And I expect that that is going to wane over time as some people that are, have a closer to ready level will, will make that decision and others may continue longer. And that's just fine. We're going to support all kids in that. So that being said, if you've been following the COVID data dashboard, we had four cases last week. All four cases were at the high school. We had zero cases in the five other schools all week long. We've had four cases this week and we broke our streak today. We had eight consecutive days of zero cases from our COVID safety checks. I, I believe we did find one case today, but it matches the data sets that we're seeing around us in surrounding towns and our counting data that continues to go down. So I, I feel like our decision is a good, the decision of the committee was a good decision and that moving forward, we'll closely monitor that. And I'll come back to you if anything significant changes. But frankly, I'm looking forward to continuing on with the, the, the very broad and deep agenda of the district as, as we move on, while we still pay very close attention to our health conditions. And so the last piece that I added here, I, I added late the other day. It's titled Assistant Director of Business and Operations. We currently do not have an Assistant Director of Business Operations. What we have is a senior budget analyst position. And we learned that, that our senior budget analyst is going to be moving on from us in April first. And so we will be reposting that position as we hired for this back at the beginning of the year, July first. And I've done some research and I've talked to some other business managers and colleagues that I know in other districts. And have in, in learning about how we can occupy this position, this is a very critical position. And I'll tip the committee now, one of the themes in the Business and Operations section of my entry plan that will be coming out in two weeks is that we need to develop some bench strength in the central office so that in the event where one of our directors or leads of a department is unable to perform their duties, maybe medically or something comes up that suddenly changes, we need to be able to adjust quickly and have somebody with the proper skills and certifications to fill those voids when those things happen. And so knowing that, that we're in a transition phase with the business office, what I would like, what I'm going to do is take that business analyst position and elevate it to Assistant Director in title. It would incorporate the same job description as the business analyst. And I'm going to add the element of producing and closing out the year-end report under the supervision and direction of the director of finance, Director of Business Operations. The rationale for doing this is that we are in a highly competitive market right now for finding highly qualified people for almost any job in the school system. And particularly when we look at our salary ranges, the current salary for the budget analyst is an eighty thousand dollar salary. And so in producing a range of eighty to a hundred thousand dollars for an Assistant Director of Business and Operations with the expectation of having the procurement certifications, which is a requirement by the MSBA, that we are going to be able to attract people to this position that are aspiring directors of business and operations. And that's really what we need to have in that position so that we can develop and grow our bench strength as a district so that we can respond to those, those moments, those urgent times that are unforeseen. This is a strategy that is utilized in many school districts. And I think it's going to be important for us to look at that across our departments. But I'm bringing this to you today. I was planning to bring it to you in two weeks, but I'm bringing it to you today to let you know that this is a move I'm going to make because I need to be able to make this hire for when we have this transition, April first, in order to post the position this way. So in looking at our policy on positions, this is not a new position. And the policy, school committee policy that I've reviewed speaks to the school committee creates or removes positions. This is not that. This is an adjustment to the title. And we're adding an element to the job description to elevate that responsibility. And that is the year-end report piece. So I bring that to you as information to let you know what my intentions are and to hopefully gain your support in terms of the direction we want to move in the business and operation and field any questions from the committee.
Any question? All right. Thanks for giving us that information, Kirk.
You bet. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. McGuire for the teaching and learning report. Dr. McGuire.
Thank you, Superintendent Downing. Good evening, everyone. A few things to report out from the teaching and learning world. First piece, I wanted to highlight our extended learning program and their February vacation camp. We was finally back at it after a two-year hiatus. Our extended learning program was really excited to offer its annual February vacation camp. The camp this February featured a variety of sessions, including group sports and games, art ventures, messy art fun, oopsie goopsie, mad science, Lego bricks, STEM beginnings, and drama out of the box. By the official registration deadline, all a hundred and four spaces available were filled by students both inside and outside of the extended learning program, which is great that we're extending that to students outside of that program. With the help of our adult aides, as well as our high school aides, students had extra helping hands in each session as they played large-scale bowling, created their own mini skits, colorful slime, robotics, and tested their improv abilities and more with drama. So we're really excited to get that camp back in and we're looking ahead to the April break moving forward. We're just a week away from our March eighteenth Professional Day of Learning for the Nishoba Regional School District. This year's theme titled Elevating Voice and Embracing Equity will take place next Friday, March eighteenth. All of our faculty, staff, presenters, as well as school committee members, you folks have received your links to sign up for the various sessions for our district day. Like last year, our day will be held virtually. All participants can sign up through our SKEGE portal, which allows attendees to read workshop descriptions, choose their sessions, examine presenter bios, select their lunch option, and also offer valuable feedback on the day's events at the end of the day. As previously reported, the day will offer several keynote speeches, workshops, presentations, and showcased work focused on equity, social justice, and elevating all voices in the realm of education and beyond. And I've provided that link to the flyer yet again for you folks, for those who want to check out the variety of workshops and presentations that we're offering next week. So please sign up, even if you can just come for a keynote speech or one workshop or anything, we'd love to have as many participants as possible. And the next piece is resources around the global conflict. We continue to work with the Department of Education in various districts and companies, organizations on providing resources for students, as well as our teachers around the current global conflict that's in the news. Working in collaboration with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, as well as various curriculum development companies and professional development organizations. We're trying to provide relevant resources for our teachers and students and helping our communities to understand the history that's associated with these current events. And in addition, our schools are also offering ways for students and faculty to listen, explore, and use their civic voices. And so what I did was I provided a list of resources that we've been sharing with teachers across the district to use in and out of their classrooms. And they're all from organizations that we either work closely with or we have curriculum with. Facing History in Ourselves is out of Boston. iCivics, Newzella is a platform that we use in the district, as well as EdWeek and the Choices Program. So we've been providing those for, for teachers just as resources as this conflict continues to evolve. And then finally, just a note on travel, as mask mandates have begun to be lifted and travel restrictions ease, the district will begin looking at travel opportunities moving forward for our students during next school year. Any trips that are domestic or foreign that are being explored will, as in past practice, be brought before the school committee for your approval. This spring, the DECA program will travel to the state finals. If any students do earn an opportunity to move forward to the national championship competition in Atlanta, this travel would also put before you folks for review and approval as that's pending right now. And that is the teaching and learning update. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Dr. McGuire, if I could just interject real quick, in, in terms of a DECA, it is possible that we'll need a quick turnaround on that. And it's just, it's a calendar device. The kids have their state competition. It's early mid-May, I believe, in Atlanta. So Madam Charles, come back to you on the agendas if that were to happen. But we, we feel like we, we would be able to do that now. And I know that the students participate, that those families know that they would be responsible for that. But let's not put the cart before the horse. Let's give the kids a chance to, to go compete. And then we'll find out what the interest is if we do have students that move on to nationals.
Great. Thank you. Amy, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. My question is with regard to travel, this, I guess for the rest of this academic year for our eighth graders, and whether there's been any conversation at the district level to come up with an alternative local field trip for them since they, their DC trip can't happen.
I, I do know that the principals of all three towns have worked on what the alternatives to those things are going to be. So that's very building specific. So I'll just leave it to them. But they, they are well aware that they can begin planning for those local alternatives. Because we do know that that was the cost, as you noted, Ms. Cohen. But I do know that this also gives them the opportunity to start their planning committees now for what's necessary for next year's opportunity to travel from here. So each principal will be handling that at their own building.
Okay, now I just have to ask one more question because I'm confused. Are you talking about they're making plans for next year? Because I was asking about this year, whether there's
Yes.
review.
This year, they're, they're going to be local because they're past the planning and the deadlines for all that. So they're doing alternatives for this year. However, they know they can begin planning in earnest for next year.
Super. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. McGuire, your excuse, we'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Hi, Todd. All right, everybody, we're going to move on to our next item, and that is new business. So we have first here, the NRHS College Report Card Presentation. And I think that Kirk can introduce our special guest.
Yes, I would like to introduce Jody Specht, who heads up our guidance department at Nishoba Regional High School to give you a presentation on the college report. So Jody, the floor is yours. Take it away.
Which was the floor? I hate not being with you guys.
The virtual floor.
The virtual floor. So Alita, you have the presentation. Is that something you can show? Uh-oh, I assumed that Alita could show this presentation.
I can show it. Oh, there she goes.
Beautiful. You guys, because right, my dislike to Zoom might have something to do with making all the things work right. So so as we do every year, we're looking back a year. And Alita, next slide. So testing. And, and for those of you who have done this with me for a few years, you know, I like to look more at trends. The data gets a little boring. We see the same thing year in and year out. But when I think about testing last year, it's, it's part of the big COVID fog. It's a blur. It was intense. It was exponentially harder than it's ever been before with probably a third of students, right? Between interviewing them on the way in the door and keeping them six feet apart and face forward and masked and all, you know, all of the tremendous support we got from the custodial staff, getting all the desks and the chairs and the space and everybody accommodating things. So we were able to do school day testing. The PSAT was still a Saturday, but the other testing was school day so that we could limit it just to Nishoba students and not bring folks in from out of town. There's a lot of other area high schools who usually use our test center for testing. And it was, it was quite, quite an undertaking each time. And I, my staff did a spectacular job. So the test results come out. Kind of you see the same sort of graph every year. And Shobit does very well in these standardized tests. I will say that we had probably seventy-ish percent of the class do testing. Usually it's in the eighties. So we were down. That mirrors, you guys are all aware, the four-year baccalaureate colleges were seventy-five to eighty-five percent test optional last year. So there were students who certainly said, none of my colleges require it. I'm not going to do it. And we were very supportive of that. We're back in this year, we have two rounds of test prep going. One in a bootcamp fashion, one in the traditional fashion. And those filled up, I think the first one that we offered filled up in four hours. And the second one filled up as well. Those are going great. And we're lining up for a spring test now. And we're starting to look at how are we going to manage testing going forward next year? Do we take the risk and open up on a Saturday test for all the other students? Those will fill up with two hundred and fifty, three hundred students, whatever we open the test for. And then what happens if next year is messy again like this year was? So that decision we're holding off on, we have another month or so before we nail that down. Next slide, Alita. AP testing. And as a reminder, all of our students who take AP classes take the exam. And once again, the way different, there were three different test windows instead of one. There was remote testing. There were, it was juggling all over the place. And because of the year, right, we had, we started out remote, went to hybrid, came back in person, a tough kid for the year, a tough year for the kids all over. We see that in these AP scores. We usually have a higher percentage of fives than anything else. This is still well above the national average, but it's not our typical AP profile. When we look at the postgraduate plans of our kids, we have, you know, you can see twenty twenty, there was a little bit of, of a dip. Kids going to college, right? We're, we're back, we're gaining ground again. And I think it'll be higher yet again this year. We'll get back to where we were in terms of the kids heading off to the four-year colleges. They applied to over three hundred different post-secondary institutions and we had a sixty-six percent accept rate, which is down. And I'll show you that in another slide. Our applications are up. All right. The scholarship program last year, you know, same scholarship program we do every year, a little, done a little bit differently last year. But again, it's something that I think Nishoba should be very, very proud of as a district. We give, these are just the local awards that go through guidance, that the kids can apply for through guidance. And a big shout out to our local chapter of Dollars for Scholars. They do tremendous work and give out a huge chunk of money. But awards go out, usually, you know, fifty, seventy-five students, it's over a hundred thousand dollars. It's just a great program. Okay. And we have donors and organizations throughout the community that we work with as well. Next slide. So this, right, I get, I told you I like to do things a little, that are a little interesting to me. This is a map of those three hundred institutions that our kids applied to. So I started thinking, where are they applying? What, what would that look like on a map? And so I did, probably not exact, because And so I did, probably not exact because I was counting and using check marks and and all of that. But it's pretty interesting to look at. The range. Our kids are looking for us country. I mean, also, last year, Canada, France, Spain, Switzerland. There's always a few international in there. But really spreading out, really looking afield. I think that um. Probably if I went back a few years, it looks even a little more intense. I I mean, the number of institutions has been going up, so maybe not. But I know that COVID has people attending a little bit closer to home. But I find, I actually like this map. I'll probably print it out and put it up on the bulletin board at school. I think it's interesting even without the college names, just to look at the range and where kids are going. Okay. Next slide. And then this, I thought would be fun. If we look back, and I've done this before, once or twice over the years, to say. Ooh, how how are things shaping up over time? And so I took this class as first grade. And I took the stats from when these guys were just really getting into school. So two thousand and ten, which would have been first grade for this class, and two thousand and twenty-one. And I eyeballed the acceptances for the kids in a, in a top chunk of the class. And looked and they look pretty comparable and it's nice. The classes are the same size. That class was two thirty-nine, last year was two thirty-two. You can see the applications were up. Back then, it was twelve hundred apps this year or last year, fifteen hundred apps. And that accounts for the slight decline in the acceptance rate. I think. Institute or nationally, there's a, a, a. There's more kids applying to more reaches than typical. Okay, and I'll get to that again in another slide in a little bit. We have our four-year college going rate, I think is continuing to go up. Again, it's not um. When we're out of COVID, we'll be back, back to where we normally are. And then the the boxes on the bottom were our most popular colleges that were applied to. And those look fairly similar as well and I'll call your attention, you know, we all know the changes. Northeastern, back in two thousand and ten, we had thirty-nine kids apply and twenty were accepted. In two thousand and twenty-one, we had thirty-seven apply and ten accepted. I think everyone knows what's happened with Northeastern when we think about it. It was a little, you know, BU, I have always thought of as drafting in the wake of Northeastern. So Northeastern had a. A real, they they brought in a president who, whose intention was to take them national. They had a great white paper about their strategy. Folks know how they worked the rank in the US news. Um, and they really achieved their goals quite well and and BU kind of moved on with them. Back in two thousand and ten, Boston University, twenty-two applied, nineteen were accepted. And last year, thirty-eight applied, six were accepted. So we can see how how times they are changing here for our kids. We're also looking at, um, our kids are looking more at the flagship Publix in New England. Okay, and um. Let's see, the other piece I wanted to say is this year BU, their applications are up to eighty-one thousand. For a class of three thousand one hundred. And BU is taking about half of their class through their early decision one and two programs. Okay. Alright, next slide, Alita. So this, I pulled this admissions insider story from something that that came through last year. Application totals going up. They're going to the institutions that already have plenty. If you look over, I pulled our apps, you know, the, I just pulled Brown and Tufts. And you can see that first chunk with the cert, with the oval on it, that is the last five years or so from two thousand and twenty-one. Underneath it is the two thousand and ten and preceding five years. So we go from double digits down to single digits. Same thing at Tufts. A lot more of our kids are applying, same class size, remember? You know, and and they varied some at the time, but probably not all that different. The other piece is that, um, that last year Harvard saw their applications rise by forty-two percent. And um. This speaks a little bit also to the effort that the selective universities. And certainly the national universities are making to become more of a mirror of our demographics in the US. I think I said last year, I had gone to the Harvard Institute on College Admissions, probably it's seven years ago now. And that was the entire focus of the whole week. Um, in every different venue that I was at, it was universities looking at, why don't we reflect? The demographics of the US. Why don't we, why doesn't our campus look like the US graduating population? And I'll read you something that I got from Forbes just recently. Many of these selective colleges continue to see a multiple-year trend of increasing application numbers. Often with percentages in the double digits that far outpace the growth in the number of applicants. And if you remember from last year, we're in a declining number of high school students nationwide and the northeast is taking a hit. Our states run between, I think it's ten and eighteen percent drop. That's, that's happening in our uh, graduating seniors. There are many co- contributing factors to these increases, including the technology. So we get to apply online, the test optional movement and college marketing efforts, and we certainly see the marketing efforts. Some of this fortunately improves access and equity in admissions, reaching students who have been historically kept out. Other growth is due to uncertainty-fueled shotgun approaches. That students are taking towards building college lists. This has the unintended consequence of creating more hysteria around what ought to be an intentional process of discernment. And that comes into, we see that as well. Again, there's more reached colleges being applied to. Sometimes. I think in COVID and being stuck in the house, there's certainly, our kids have gone off on college tours. But probably not as many and it hasn't been as thorough as it has in the past. So they're not a hundred percent sure why. I think there, there is some piece of, well, I'll apply. I like it. I can't decide which. And so I'm looking forward to the future when we're able to bring a little more sanity back into that, a little more thoughtfulness. And these applications really are much more about the fit for the student. And not just the ease of the application. Alita, next slide. So this is some of the data from this year. I pulled this from higher ed. University of California received two hundred and fifty thousand applications to one of its campuses. This year, I I just find these numbers shocking and I share them because I'm, they blow me away. Fifty-six percent of the domestic applicants reside in the most affluent quintile of zip codes. Which is not surprising. And the greatest increases were in the most selective colleges, which are up twenty-five percent in the last two years. So this is again mirroring what I was talking about with Brown and and with um, Tufts there. Down bottom, BC, this was their early decision pool. They had a fifty percent increase with almost three thousand applicants. And they brought in eight hundred ED one applicants. And again, typical of what we're getting from colleges. They are very conscious and advertising the, the way that they have outreach. And the applicants they're bringing in that are from the underrepresented populations. Okay. Up on the top right, we have more kids again looking at flagships, big universities, even out of state. And those are also getting more competitive. We think about the Honors College at Pitt. Seven thousand students applied. They made six hundred offers, which is a pretty. Significant increase from what I've thought of Pitt over the years, but my years go back farther than they should probably. UMass, right on our doorstep, twenty-four thousand students just through the Early Action Program. And then what is, I find concerning, quite frankly, my, this is one of the emails that I got. This is UVM telling us that they're gonna add an early decision program. And I personally don't like that. I think ED benefits the colleges, not the kids. I don't like locking the kids in. UVM's very expensive. And my guess is that this is the first of what we're gonna see in a move of the selective flagship starting to go in that direction. Okay. Some of the things to look forward to coming up. Next slide, Alita. And I like this slide. I, you know, I've done finances before from time to time, um. If you think about it, ninety-one, ninety-two is probably the range. When most of the parents were in college, right? If our kids are eighteen, this was thirty years ago. It's kind of in that ballpark. And if you look, that top orange line is the difference in. The growth at the average private four-year college. Okay. And during this time, the price at the public. Four-year institutions is two and a half times as high as it was. The average published price of the, at the um. Privates has gone up. And if you look, also important, down there at the bottom. The income in the US increased by just twenty-three percent. So we're looking at the cost of college outpacing everything. And then, of course, when over, I added on over to the left, when we look at some of those most popular colleges. And these, I put in there varied by source because if you try to find the um. If you try to find the total cost, either I have to go calculate it myself or I find, there's different places publish it differently. And the very, very seldom is it just flat out on the college website. And I gotta tell you, I think I ran into somebody earlier who was eighty-two thousand. So we are kicking up into the eighty thousands for some of these very popular colleges. Um, so that graph on the left, which is talking about the average price, is um. Nationwide. And we've long known that the northeast is the most competitive and the most expensive for colleges. And then I just put in our public, private in the area, UMass Amherst and Lowell, about thirty thousand. The Worcester State, Fitchburg State, those are running probably twenty-five, twenty-two. And what used to be much more. I wanna say reasonable, but I guess I mean closer to our not quite so high. The out-of-state tuition for the flagships in the other New England states is rising as well. So UNH I've seen go up for out-of-state as we've gone on. So anybody who's having kids now should save money, even though it'll be easier to get in because there's so few babies being born right now because of COVID. Next slide. So this is just a tribute to Mrs. Hilliger, who is my air traffic controller in in Guidance. She manages everything and does a ton of work, does kind of her own responsibility and then manages us. And Judy French, our art teacher. So each year, we do something for the seniors to celebrate their decisions going off. No matter where they're going or what they're doing. Our first one was up on the top left. Our seniors are leaving the nest. Um, you can see their ship is sailing. We have up, up and away. Two thousand and twenty, we didn't get all the sunglasses on there. Your future's so bright because we closed down March thirteenth or March tenth or whenever it was. But the week, we have them come in and we're celebrating where they're headed off to. Whether they're going into the military, they're going into the trades, they're going to a local college or faraway college. We get the whole senior class up there. And then our final slide. I love this year's theme. They're our first pack to leave the den and we had, this was a student put together the background. You can see the wolves howling and the paw prints have already started on the road. So. That's how we end it.
Fantastic. Thanks, Jody. That was really great.
Excellent.
I wonder if anybody has any questions. Yeah, Mike.
Uh, Jody, thanks again. This, this, this always is really interesting. Um, I'm. Looking at one of the first slides that addresses post-secondary plans, um, that we've got. You know, obviously the largest chunk going to um, four-year colleges. Another chunk going to two-year colleges and then a third chunk sort of in this other category, whether it's military or work or gap year. And that number's been rising over the past few years, which, which frankly doesn't surprise me, but I'm wondering, um. Given your position at the high school, I wonder if you can share with us some of the gap year opportunities. The students who choose that route are uh, experiencing.
So right now, gap year has been, honestly, we've had, um, you know, we're looking at the COVID numbers, honestly, Mike. So the, we had a lot of kids who were already working full-time and wanted to keep working full-time. Right now, we have been, when they are post-grads, they call us and through the registrar, we're submitting applicant. Submitting materials for them applying to four-year colleges. So that I know a number of them have been doing that. In terms of typical years, typically, we don't have gap year. We occasionally have kids have, take gap years. Philosophically, I don't want anybody to just stop high school and not have a plan. So we encourage them to apply to a college and defer for a year if they have an actual plan of what they're doing. Short of that, we work a lot with our students to say, let's get you signed up at um, a community college. And start taking a couple of classes while you work. I think that for them to go to college, take a few classes, know they can do it. Sets them up for when they decide to continue further on. Um, we've also, uh, probably four years ago. Part of a big piece of PD at the High School for Guidance was looking at trades. Looking at the Minuteman options, the union options, looking at the different type of certificate programs. And we did as PD for ourselves for the year, we really focused on non-four-year college options for kids. You know, COVID blew things to smithereens for the more uncertain of our senior population. And we are looking forward to getting back to this. So we just had. Last week, I think it was, we had um, on-the-spot decision, we hosted Decision Day with five colleges. Two were state colleges, three were community colleges and had twenty-two students participating. So that we can get them connected, they're able to interview with the admissions person, talk about the programs, talk about financial aid. Get what they need right then and there. Now this year it was remote and actually that's something I think probably will stay remote. It wouldn't surprise me. In the past, it's been hard to get the four-year colleges to do Decision Day for us because they're coming out just for a couple of kids. The community colleges have always been willing. Because we, our, our kids who are applying to community colleges are often applying to multiples. And they're using Decision Day as a chance to fill out the college and figure out which one is right for them.
Thanks, Jody.
Well, it's for Karen.
I don't know if you, if you have an answer to this, but uh, it seems like the. You know, the early decision, early action trend that we're seeing nationally, I'm assuming you're seeing it in Neshoba as well. And I'm just curious. And you may not have data on this, but maybe it's more of your impression. Are you finding that transfers are also increasing? Do you ever just hear anecdotally about more students transferring? After making early decision, early action decisions?
That's an incredibly interesting question. I've never looked at the kids who transfer what that, what program they entered under. A number of years back, I went, there was a flyer, you know, it was, oh, a third of the kids who enroll in college transfer. Okay, and I was like, there's no way that's true for us. And so I literally went back in our um. We periodically buy post-grad enrollment rather than, and and I went back and looked and the numbers were incredibly small. The highest transfer rate that Neshoba students, post-grads had was from an out-of-state private. To an in-state public. Or from a two-year college. Or from a two-year college to a four-year college. But I never thought to look at it by program. I don't think, we had, we have a handful of kids who go early decision. It's not a large, you know, it used to be one handful. It's probably now two handfuls, but no more than that. And early action, quite frankly, people feel, you know, and we're in the Northeast, people feel left out if they haven't got all their applications out by November first. I'm constantly trying to slow them down and say, let's be more thoughtful about this. But I don't know how you genuinely take the anxiety out of the, the student, the family, everybody, when they see everybody else going early. So that will be a battle we'll always fight.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Amy.
Thanks. My question is kind of specific, but you know, I'm looking at these charts about the published tuition and fees over time, which is shocking, you know, but I guess shouldn't be because I keep hearing how expensive college is getting. But my, my question is, in one of these notes, it says, also important, the increases in the net prices that students actually pay after taking grant aid into consideration have been smaller over the long term than increases in published prices. And then it references some figures, and I'm just wondering where I could find those figures or what, where your sources, because I'd like to dig deeper into that and try to get some more detail.
Yep. So every college has a net price calculator. So for your own particular student, you can go on and look at a net price calculator. If you want to go sort of from college to college and look at by bucket, by income bucket, what the average net price is, I would send you to the iPads data, which is government data. And if you just Google college navigator, that's the interface. And there's a lot of good data in there and you can look bucket by bucket. Income bucket, do you know what I mean? What the average net price is. It's hard to get specific financial aid data anywhere, anytime. Probably the college navigator has the most consistent reporting I've seen. And I won't tell you guys what UT Austin's tuition was when I went. Thirty dollars a credit hour?
I have a question for you, Jody. I wonder, and you may not track this or capture it anywhere yet, but I wonder if we try to understand how many of our kids actually complete college in five years? Because going into colleges are, is an interesting statistic, but almost anybody can get into a college these days. So do you guys track that completion rate?
So we don't track it on a regular basis, but again, when I looked back at that, it's, it's, it's a very high number and it's a very, it's a surprisingly high number of kids who stay on directly and get their master's degree. So I can purchase data that goes through the National Clearinghouse, which the majority of colleges report to. It's, it's the, it's, think of Clearinghouse as student loan, right? They're verifying enrollment for student role, student loans. Not every college participates. But the times that I have looked back, and I know Cheryl Gallagher, one of our special ed teachers, has done some looking back at students who had supported services. And, and she was telling me that all of her kids had finished college. So it's just, you know, doing that is another big project on the side. But I agree with you, Lee. I think that's worthwhile to look at, and I think it's very good news that we can celebrate.
Yeah, I'd be willing to bet that Neshoba's number is relatively high. I know that some, some other area schools, you know, the number is actually around thirty-five percent finish college.
Oh, yeah, way higher than that.
Which is, you know, that's the national average, though. And, and although Neshoba's higher, I would love to understand where we are there because I think that finishing is the ultimate test.
Yep.
Go ahead, Rich.
I just wanted to say, I thought this was a really great presentation. Thanks for doing it. I'm not sure if you did it last year. Forgive me if I don't remember, but well done and thanks for doing it. As a parent, but also as a committee member.
Great, thanks, Rich. Anybody else have any questions? Dan, I know that, is Dan here? Yeah, Dan, I know is a junior, but Sonia, you're a senior, right? So i-if you want to weigh in, you certainly do not need to, but I wanted to give you a minute if you'd like to give your perspective.
Yeah, no, I totally can. This year, me and pretty much everyone in my grade felt that stress, you know, going into around November. And it's like, yes, we understand that like, there's time and like people are says like, don't worry, there's time. But it doesn't really feel like that, like Mrs. Beck said, like everyone else is like getting all crazy about college. So, um, yeah, I noticed a lot of my peers, including myself, like really tried to get those early action things in more than the early decision, I, I'm pretty sure, but just from the like kids that I interact with. And then I noticed a lot of the colleges that I was applying to didn't have that early action option. Even though I wanted, wanted that too. So, yeah, looking for that was a big thing this year. But yeah, I know a lot more students than I thought that I would that were looking into like the military or taking gap years or gap semesters. And my sister took a gap year. She graduated twenty-twenty, but she deferred from a college. So, uh, this is my college perception. But yeah, definitely more colleges being applied to than in history, people's parents are constantly telling, I only applied to two colleges. And it's like, well, I'm applying to sixteen, some of my friends, they're saying, it's like crazy. Yeah.
All right, thanks for that. And it seems, Dan, do you want to weigh in as well as a junior?
Yeah, I was wondering if I heard it right. I think I heard it said that the more selective colleges are increasing in selectivity even more than those that are less selective. Is that right?
Yes. So what's happening is that the most selective colleges are getting more applications. And we have probably a dozen colleges that are now, well, that are under ten percent acceptance rate. Some of them are going into the low, very low digits. And we have a declining high school population across the US, certainly a declining high school population in the Northeast. So the schools that are regional schools, that are not pulling nationally or have the top fifty, seventy-five hundred names, those schools are able to open up to more students, to bring in kind of a broader set of students than they would have seven or eight years ago. But those most selective schools are becoming harder to get into statistically because they're getting more applications. And also on a philosophical level where they are really trying to mirror ethnically what the US looks like, cultural diversity. They're looking at first generation and trying to bring them in. There's a lot of DEI effort at the higher ed level. Rightfully so. They're playing catch-up is, is, is what it is. So, yeah, unfortunately, it's getting harder for those favorite colleges.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation. That was really relevant for me because I'm going to be going to apply to colleges fairly soon in the future.
Yep. So we have our juniors starting in junior seminar. We do guidance seminars with the juniors in third quarter and with the seniors in first quarter, working through these things.
Great. Amy and Rich, I see your hands. Is there, Amy, was there some, still something you wanted to say?
Um, yeah, I'm gonna borrow Dan's word and say that this presentation felt really relevant for me too. As my oldest is a junior and we're just starting to think about all of this. And I think that this presentation has so much useful information in it that I'm just, it occurred to me, I, how is, how is this being shared with the larger community of parents, you know? Is this something that gets posted on the website? Will this be in the newsletter that parents are getting? So that they can benefit as much as we are from this?
Well, I don't know. So we had our junior parent meeting that was very well attended in the fall. I tend not to talk national, like national stats. When I talk to you guys, I'm kind of talking trends. When I'm talking to junior parents, I want to talk a little more specifics. I, you know, I can, Amy, you were at that night. You know, I can talk for like three hours at a time on this topic, but I don't know. That's a, that's a good question. I don't know, is the present, did you feel like the presentation has any relevance? Isolated, maybe I'll add more notes, add some more notes down to the bottom of it and we can post something with present presenter notes that they can look at. Oh, either way, and I'm happy to have people come in and talk. I'm happy to do another night. You guys know me, I'll do this stuff.
The junior, the evening, the evening that you held for the juniors, like the college awareness evening was very, very helpful.
Yep.
And I think that this, this presentation is posted on the meeting materials, so you know, parents can access it there. But perhaps throw it on your, on your website as well.
Yeah, maybe actually, maybe, I think the, the conversation is a good one too. So maybe if we say like, these are the minutes, like go into, not that, not that people wouldn't be riveted from the very beginning, but if we gave them a, here's the time to start, maybe that, that they would like that, you know?
I, I was riveted by the whole thing, but maybe that's just me. Like, I think if you shared this with all the junior parents, they would appreciate it. That's just my opinion, so.
Okay. The other thing you guys will have seen our newsletters, and so we can maybe highlight it in there. I hope you guys are opening the newsletters. We've put a lot of work into getting that, that the newsletter series out. That's a big initiative that, that we've been working on, so for all four years.
Yeah, the newsletters are great. And Alita does mark the minutes by time. And so if somebody wanted to fast forward the YouTube and re-watch this, they could.
That'd be great.
Minute marker, yeah.
We'll add that to the newsletter. And actually, maybe for all four years, because I think that looking at the trends is an interesting thing, even as freshman parents, right?
Rich, did you?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it would be easy to perhaps ask the Bolt TV people or whomever to just edit just your presentation and you could put that in the newsletter or put it on your website or something. I think that would be just as helpful. So, great job.
Sharon, go ahead.
Jody, forgive me for not remembering this. I feel like I should know this already. But in the junior seminars that are happening now, is the, is part of the conversation about making a plan? Because I feel like there are multiple different pathways that kids can go and can get to where they need to be. But I, I, I feel like there's just this anxiety that kids are ending what they've always known and moving on to something that is wide open and undefined and incredibly scary. So, and I, like I said, I feel like I should note the answer to this and I just can't remember. But is part of that conversation about making a plan and that there are lots of different options for kids to consider when they're making a plan?
So yes and no. We, we touch on that a little bit, but honestly, in the seminar, when we have ten to twenty-five juniors who maybe are friends, maybe aren't at the tables, we're doing sort of the group information around Naviance pieces, around testing pieces. It's those individual conversations. And we started our individual meetings with the juniors in, I think it was earlier this year because we, we have folks ready to go. So it was probably maybe even early January were our first ones. And, you know, we talk about this, right? The, the future is not a road, right? You're not reaching to just go down the road at the rotary. You're, you're really reaching for the sky and those are branches that go all over the place. You look at the trees and there's a million different ways to head to where you want to go. And those are one-on-one conversations that we have. And we meet with all the juniors individually and many of them multiple times in the spring, talking about those kinds of things. I am, we are all a hundred percent with you, Sharon. I think that that I referenced the newsletters earlier. If there's anybody who has younger students here, like our, we're making an effort to put things in those newsletters about different kinds of careers, being a massage therapist, being, you know, being an electrician, different, it feels too much like there's only one pathway. And a lot of times, kids can't really articulate that until senior year when they're like, but I don't want to necessarily be on that pathway. So we're trying to start this earlier in a way of just exposure and having people think about different things. And this is why, you know, I'm not, I'm not silly to think that the students are reading all of our newsletters. I actually hope the parents are reading all of our newsletters too, and looking at the, the, the different bits of information and thinking about, like you said, different pathways, because it's not a career that's going to make you happy. It's fulfilling work that's going to make you happy. And, and that where you go when you leave high school is just getting you ready to be successful in that fulfilling work. Sonia? Oh, I shouldn't be asking. Tell, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Go ahead, Sonia.
I really appreciate you saying that. Miss Beck, it's definitely been hard, at least for a lot of people in my class, like being virtual for our sophomore, junior years, like seeing those options, especially, like we would look back at the culture that we were in like freshmen. And the conversation was like, oh, well, do you have any idea where you want to go to college? And there wasn't quite a conversation for anything else, at least like, not so much in the guidance department, but just like culturally as in the student population, it's much more like streamlined conversations towards college. But that's just my, like, giving you the student eyes and on how that is. And, but I really do appreciate, because a lot of, there's been students again and again, just being like, well, I mean, the only thing we ever like have been shown like by the culture in the past at the high school has been like college is the next step. So definitely good to talk about other options, at least to know that there are out there.
Yep.
Great. Okay. Looks like everybody is good. So thank you one more time, Jody Specht, for coming in and enlightening us, giving us all that information. We really appreciate it.
Absolutely. You guys have a nice night.
Thank you, Jody.
Yep, thank you.
All right. So we'll move on to our next topic in new business, and that's the DECA donation acceptance. So Kirk, do you want to speak to this or maybe?
Yeah, I'll have Pat Maroni introduce this.
Tonight I have one letter from DECA, a DECA program at the high school. And actually, the letter has three separate donations on it. The first donation is a fifteen hundred dollar donation from Hardy Physical Therapy. And the second donation is a thousand dollars from the Eastern Bank. Third donation is a five hundred dollar donation from Murphy Insurance Agency. And I just, the, the letter says that the, that the money will be used to assist the students in attending state competitions in March. So I, we need acceptance of this donation.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thanks, Mike. Any discussion? Let's take the vote. Joe?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mike?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And Brett?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Uh, we'll go to our next matter and that is another donation.
This is another donation. It's a thousand dollar donation. And it's for the German club at the high school, under the direction of Sabine Vontorn. She would like to accept the thousand dollars G, G A P P, German American Partnership Program stipend for the, the stipend for that program. And this will assist the club in purchasing a three hundred and sixty-degree camera and two V- And this will assist the club in purchasing a three hundred and sixty degree camera and two VR goggle sets. This will allow the students in the German club to participate in a virtual exchange with GAVE, the German American Virtual Exchange.
Cool. Mike, would you like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll move to accept the, uh, the gap stipend, which will. Assist the club in purchasing the camera and the VR goggle sets.
Time a second.
Second.
Oh, I think that might have been rich. Any discussion? Seeing none? Joe?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mike?
Yes.
Uh, Brett?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Think I got everybody? It was unanimous. Great. Yes, thank you, Pat, for bringing those to us. We are so grateful to those donors for. Helping our students get better in so many ways. So thank you to all of them. Uh, next on the agenda here is our school choice discussion. It's that time of year again. To decide whether or not we want to remain in the school choice program or opt out. And so I'll turn it over to you, Kirk.
Great. Uh, Madam Chair, included in your packet is the school choice in and out, uh, twenty twenty-two, uh, information. This is the traditional. Body of information that you receive for school of choice. As you recall from the budget presentation processes, we have had a decline in the number of students. That we are accepting school of choice due to the sunset of that decision years ago. And that the revenue that, that those students bring is decreasing over time. To where in five years we will be bringing in zero revenue for school of choice. While we're still spending five hundred thousand dollars a year out to other school systems for students that leave us via school of choice. So I think, uh, this evening's discussion is just an opportunity for the committee to discuss school of choice and the merits of school of choice. Uh, because Madam Chair, I believe we'll put it on a future agenda, either this next meeting or the meeting after that. Where we will vote to approve school of choice for, I believe is the next agenda. Uh, we vote school of choice. For the FY twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
So if anybody, um, has any clarifying questions, we're not really debating it tonight. It was just for information. But clarifications needed? Or anything that you might want to understand from the superintendent in the future to inform your vote? Sonia?
Um, I'm just curious, what is the revenue piece about?
Yeah, Sonia, so when students, uh, that live in one of our three towns. Attend a school of choice district like say Clinton, for instance. Uh, the school system, uh, pays over five thousand dollars per student to that school system to help pay for the cost to educate that child. Conversely, if a student from that town came to Nishova and we opened up school of choice, we would receive that revenue from the other town. So what I will express to the committee is certainly you saw from the budget presentations, the, the delta of what we pay out to what we bring in. Is increasing from year to year. And not to draw judgment on that, as we look at what our revenue streams are. I do think it's important, I, uh, understanding school of choice has been closed for many years. Uh, and that has been the mood of this committee traditionally. I think it would be worthy to undertake a, a study of school of choice. Regardless of what this committee decides for twenty-two, twenty-three, but take a study of school of choice. Early in the school year next year, so that we can, uh, incorporate that into our budget planning process. So that we have a clear understanding of what our budget creation and revenue streams are for the future as well. Since we are getting close to that date where we will have no school of choice students coming to Nishova.
Uh, Mary?
So just to clarify and go along with what, um, Kirk has said. In terms of sunsetting this, what we are required, um, by chapter seventy-one is that every year. The school committee votes on whether to accept a school choice or not. And in many districts, um, what happens is superintendent makes a recommendation based on. Is there room? Basically, is there room in, um, in classes and, and also the feasibility? Of, um, of being able to bring the students in. Um, so let's say that there, there were some, uh, courses that were. That could have been eliminated by bringing students in, you're able to keep those courses. So it's, there, there are multi, multi-factors. To school choice and certainly, uh, on the, on the pro side is, um, being able to have. More diversity in terms of our student population. And on, on the con side is the fact that it costs us quite a bit more than five thousand dollars a year. To educate any, any student. So there's, there's a give and take and, uh, for many years, uh, the decision has been. No, we don't, we don't have, we don't really have room. Um, and so that's, so, um, I think that Kirk's idea of, of having a study and looking at this. Because as, as we look at other districts, they may open up school choice in certain grades for a certain number of, of students. To be able to have students come in and to have that, um, diversity and to think about that because. As we know, we don't have very much diversity in, in our district. But on the other side, you see, we, the school committee has to weigh all this and, and I'm sure that, that our superintendent will, um, provide this for us. We have to think of the fiscal side too. And for a long time, um, districts have, have talked about the fact that five thousand dollars. Just, um, just kind of doesn't do it for the, the sending, um, district to pay for the students who live in their district. So it's, it's complex and, um, and then the, the other factor is that once we accept. A, a, a student of, you know, through school choice, then that student is ours. We don't say. Next year, the following year, oh, thanks a lot. You helped with our numbers and we were really glad to have you here, but. You know, um, now, now we don't need the number or, or anyway, so they're ours for the duration of as long as they want to stay with us. So I think there's a, it's complex. There's a lot to think about and, um, and so I'm not saying one side or the other, but just that. Every year by law, we have to look at this and make a decision. And, um, as Kirk said, for a number of years, the decision has been, um, that we are not able to, um, accept students. For a school choice, whereas we have students who do go out to, to other. Other districts and it's important to find out why they're leaving. And if, if another district is offering something that we don't have, you know, what are those reasons? And how can we keep, um, as many of our students as possible? Not to be selfish, but they're ours.
Madam Chair, may, may I respond?
Sure.
To a couple of Dr. McCarthy's points, in, in terms of the, uh. Diversity topic you raised, there's no ensure, uh, assurance that. Uh, the profile of students would, would change or bring in diversity into our districts. And the reason why I bring this up is because. With school of choice, it is a lottery-based system. You cannot select students to come in. You have to, to honor it. And that means. Yeah, for a student that may come in that has a high degree of services, has the same opportunity as a student who does not. And then also thinking about what is to the cost to educate student, boy, is that a complex topic. Uh, we can certainly take our, our student population, take our budget divided by our student enrollment and come up with a number. But it's far more nuanced than that. So I'll give you an example of, as I was looking for. Information on getting some precedence on class sizes in Nishoba early in, in my entry. I came across in two thousand and ten, a school of choice document that cited grades K one and two. As having ratios of twenty-two to one as desire, not required, but. To strive for ratios of twenty-two to one and twenty-four to one and lower grades three through twelve. And so I use as an example to say, if you, you can select areas of your school system of where you would. Uh, bring in school of choice students. So for instance, if I said, uh, at, we are able to open up. Uh, the Mary Rollinson fourth grade class for, uh, school of choice because. We're at an eighteen to one ratio that would require us to have four sections. And we could add a student or two into that group, we would still be four sections. It doesn't. There's no additional staffing cost that would be in there if that student doesn't require some other services, uh, other than, uh, the, the materials cost. So there's a wide swath of potential impacts to what the budget would look like in that regard. So. That's why I think it's pertinent to, to get into a deep study to understand what that would look like. Uh, because if this committee in the, uh, the now or in the future were to decide to reopen school of choice, you can do so. Based upon the targeted areas where you feel like you can absorb, uh, school of choice students. Without say having to add additional FTE to your district.
Uh, Steve?
Correct me if I'm wrong, or maybe it's just outdated information. But at one point we had open enrollment in this district and we, um. We acquired or we were given a student with significant support needs and it cost us three hundred thousand dollars a year. And we got that, we got the five thousand dollars from that student's. Out, outplacement district. Uh, is that, uh, is that still a situation? Number one. And number two. I thought, and I'm, I could be wrong, that once you throw it open, you throw it open for that year. And we keep those students for the rest of their academic career.
Yeah. Uh, so a couple of things, Mr. Rubenstein, I've, I've never heard the story of a three hundred thousand dollar student through school of choice. When you're talking about those kind of price tags. It, that student isn't an outplacement, so they're not attending the Nishoba schools. Um, we don't have any students. That we're educating within our system at, at that kind of cost. So I, I'm curious as, perhaps we could talk offline about where the nature of that was. And I could do some research to it. Um, when you open school of choice, you can be targeted. You can say, we're opening school of choice, but we're only opening it. For grades nine through twelve. Or you can say, we're opening school of choice, but we're only opening school of choice for say, uh, Florence Sawyer School grades six, seven and eight, you know? However, uh, to the point you just made and Dr. McCarthy made, once you accept the student, you own the student up to and through graduation.
Amy?
Thank you. Um. I, I'd be in favor of looking into this issue with the more in-depth study, just to try to understand.
Yeah.
The decision, you know, the, the factors that would affect this decision, but. We have to make a decision the next meeting for next year's school choice. Is there any way that we could get? Some of the backup for the numbers that you just used for the five hundred thousand dollars going out?
We presented them in our budget presentation.
Okay, I knew I saw, I, I, it sounded familiar. I just couldn't figure out where to find it. So.
Ms. Cohen, if you go to the workshop presentation, the slides are in the workshop presentation.
Okay, thank you. I will, I'll look at that.
Mike?
Thank you. Um, to the superintendent, I'm wondering, um, if you could just clarify something for me. I'm, I'm looking on the second. School choice out district page, the second page of the presentation and I'm looking at. The vocational students, right? So the numbers are really robust in ninth grade. They drop off, uh, at second, uh, tenth grade, drop off a little bit more in eleventh grade and then drop off pretty precipitously. For the twelfth grade and it seems to me that there's, it's probably one of two things, either. Something happens where it's very popular, um, in the underclass years and then something happens where they. Um, either have a different placement their senior year or something like that, or does it represent a growing interest in Minuteman? Which would I, what I think has, um, deeper impacts. I'm wondering if you could clarify that for us.
Yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll harken you back, Mr. Haresh to, uh. The enrollment presentation I gave and, and also gave to the, um, when I, at the budget and warrant subcommittee meeting. It's exact, that's the Minuteman effect. That's the advent of a new building, the new programming and the promotional, uh, strategy that went into that. Because that senior class, those twelfth graders, uh, attended the previous, uh, iteration of Minuteman. Prior to the new building. So I think there's a big effect there.
So can we expect those numbers to be just as robust in the coming years? And then, of course, that has big. A big financial impact for our budget in our district. Is that, is that accurate?
Yes, that, that is accurate. We, we're gonna have to look at that carefully, what the impact of. As students make those choices and they're, express their interests, we gotta study that closely. I don't have the crystal ball to tell you what that'll look like. I will say, um, and I'll just, uh, give some props to our high school principal, Dr. Boynton. She received, uh, recent accolades for the, uh, onboarding meeting for eighth grade. Uh, recently that she gave the evening for families and she's been doing the road show to our eighth grade. She was at Florence Sawyer School just today. Presenting to the eighth grade students at Florence Sawyer. So I think one major strategy we're doing, Mr. Haresh, is we're doing a better job. Of promoting our programming and highlighting the excellence of our high school to our own students. So that they can see that. And Dr. Boynton has done an outstanding job to make that happen. So. The numbers that come through, we're gonna have to study that closely. So that we can understand the number of sections that we need in our high school because stabbing at a high school, as you know, is so nuanced. By class size, courses you offer, what courses you keep because their interest, what courses you need to sunset because there isn't interest. All those things are impacted by enrollment.
Alright, thank you for that.
Go ahead, Sean.
Uh, just a quick question, Mr. Downing, the students that are moving out of the district, uh, for whatever reason and want to remain. With the Nishoba district, does, did they become school choice?
Or? Yeah. So, so for, for students, so I'll give you an example. Um, the town of Clinton has the largest number. Of Nishoba residents attending the Clinton Public Schools. And so I inquired, a quick answer I got was, uh, they think athletics is a draw. If that is opportunity to play or whatever it may be. There is a significant, the, the biggest bunch does go to Clinton. So. For the reasons, they can vary. A lot of times, um, I would say the pattern I saw. And, and I must admit, I used this strategy in my own family at one point. Is that employees will bring their kids with them to their places of work and so you have that impact there. So. There's a variety of reasons of what it comes down to, but there are so, some trends we're looking to identify.
No, maybe, just to clarify, so in other words, somebody's going to the Nishoba District School and then say they move out to Lunenburg. But they want to remain at the, the Nishoba school. Does, does that? They can't.
They cannot remain in the Nishoba schools. They would have to go to Lunenburg.
Would that be eligible for a school choice matter?
It would only be eligible if you have open school of choice in your school system. So by version of the fact that it was closed for this year, we have had some families in that exact situation. Maybe not Lunenburg, but definitely other towns. And we had to inform those families, you have to un-enroll from, uh, the Nishoba schools to attend because. We do not have school of choice open as a vehicle to remain.
Okay, thank you.
I will say too, to clarify very quickly, Sean, that even if a child went, moved to Lunenburg and school of choice is open for Nishoba. There's a lottery for school of choice.
That's right.
And that child still might not be among the numbers allowed in.
And I would like to say that that also is the case for employees. If school of choice is open, you cannot issue preference for employees for your school of choice seats that are available.
Now, does that student, is that student at least permitted to finish out the school year or is it as soon as they move, they're out?
As soon as they move, they, they are asked to re-enroll their school system. What I will tell you, Mr. Windsor, is that when I have a scenario. is that when I have a scenario of of we've reached that April vacation time, uh there there comes a point in time, we have to think about what is the best for the health and wellness of the child in terms of how to complete the school year. So I, you know, when we have those scenarios that pop up, April vacation and later, I'm more likely to approve them to complete their school year.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Joe.
Uh thank you, Madam Chairman. Um just let me get that hand down. It's so annoying up there. Uh I'm just gonna engage in some free association here, because if I were at home listening to this, I would be very confused by what I'm hearing. So first thing, I I just want to clarify for anybody who's out there, and anybody who thinks I'm wrong, please correct me. The our our obligation, our responsibility is that, I think, I believe under the law that we are all districts of choice unless we opt to not be a district of choice. So our obligation, right, yeah, so our obligation is that we have to, I think, vote on or before the first of June whether we're going to opt out of the um school choice statute. And in order to do that, we have to have a public hearing. So if I'm hearing correctly, we're gonna address this next week, or excuse me, not next week, at our next meeting, at which point we would be required to hold a public hearing at that point, at which point, if we vote on at that point, the 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 issue is resolved for the year. Um if there's any dis- desire to have a a study on this and to to push this down the road a little bit, it would seem premature at this point to have a uh public hearing on it next, at our next meeting, unless we open the public meeting and then continue it for further study. Um I I see nobody is objecting to that.
On the, on that point, Mr. Gleason, that's not what I'm suggesting. What I'm suggesting is, after the decision is made, no matter what we do, we look to next year to go into a study so that we can understand it for future budgets.
No, and I and and forgive me, Mr. Superintendent, I wasn't implying that that was the import of your statement. I heard some comments from some of the other members that thought, hey, we do that, and if there was any inclination to do that, I just want to let them know we have the public hearing obligation. The other thing too is, I just want to clarify as well in regards to my colleague, Mr. Horace's question. Um I I think it confuses the issue when you start talking about our regional vocational technical school district. Students from our, from our district who opt to attend our regional vocational school district are not students of choice. I think that in order to be a student of choice, yeah, they would have to opt to attend Assabette or Monticujus or Nishoba Reach, Votech up in Westford or one of those schools. Okay, so I I'm gonna stop my free association, Madam Chairman. It looks like I was on point with all my issues, so I will leave it at that. Thank you.
I think Karen might be next.
Oh, actually, uh, Mr. Gleason cleared that up for me. I would, I wanted some clarification around the vocational high school piece versus school choice, so now I have it, I'm all set.
These pages are there, and and I should have done a better job explaining it. When you look at uh pages two and three, and when you look at these towns, it's to give you a sense of uh students that are going out into charter, in-state private, out-of-state, out of district public. So when we're talking about out of district public, that's the students that in the school of choice program we would be paying tuition out.
But we still pay tuition to the voc, but we just do it through, we do it outside of the budget. We do it.
A different, yeah, it's a different mechanism.
The town.
Those are are the town, the town does that. The only things that we pay out through our budget is charter school. Um uh and and of course, s- specialized placements where.
And charter charter outs are dependent upon the particular charter, and then we get reimbursement from the state at a certain percentage.
That's correct.
Okay, um I think with Steve, Steve, is your hand still up? No, okay, Mary.
So I would just want to reference back to a comment that Sean had made about uh and and just to give a scenario. So if a student lives in one of our three towns, that student is ours in terms of our enrollment um figures um for the October first. Um so there there are students. So think of it this way, someone from Bolton wants to go to Clinton, and we send with that student who's lives in Bolton, so is still part of our numbers, we send um five thousand dollars in the backpack over over to Clinton. Clinton, but but that student is still counted as one of our students. All right, for in in terms of enrollment in October for those numbers. Whereas they, whereas someone from Clinton, um so Clinton has a student, lives in Clinton. So Clinton Public Schools puts five thousand dollars in that student's backpack, and they come to Bolton. But that student, the number, that person uh with this acid, you know, the specific number that every single student has, it belongs to Clinton. So just, that was something that became clarified as we started looking at the regional budget, the regional agreement, and figuring out um numbers, et cetera. Um but then the clarifying questions and the answers that um that Joe Joe brought up, were all, were all right, too, were all correct.
Thanks, Mary. Go ahead, Rich.
I don't mean to drag us in the weeds here, but did I hear you say correctly, uh Superintendent Downing, that students are leaving our district to go to Clinton? Is that what you've said them?
Well, they're going to a whole host of towns, of which Clinton is the largest of those towns.
Okay.
Number of students go to Clinton.
Do you mean, are they regionalized down to the K like we are?
Pardon me?
Are they regionalized K through twelve like we are?
Yeah, they're K to twelve.
Oh, oh, well, they're not regionalized, they're a.
They're not regionalized, they're.
But they're leaving our district at all the age levels, because Clinton is K to twelve school choice, I think.
Right, but we we have, we have students in Harvard and Hudson and Lincoln Sudbury, and we we have students in in districts all around us. I only use Clinton because I know it just happens to be the 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 median of those.
Great.
Okay.
So, you know, guys, we will have more conversation about this at our next meeting. We'll have the hearing where the public can weigh in, as always. Um Kirk, I wonder, you know, I think what Mary said rings for me that we would ask you for a recommendation for next year. Would you be prepared to do that?
Well, I I can offer just my general recommendation, but yes, I can uh be prepared to do that. As we advance our budget forward and we walk through the budget process, and then we're gonna talk through that now, I think we've crafted a number where we're able to put forward a budget that is a responsible budget based on the conditions we have. So I do not think we're in a position where we need to open school of choice as a mechanism to fulfill um the budget, but we can save that for that discussion if you wish.
Thanks, Kirk. Okay, everybody, um seeing Rich, your golden hand is old, right? Just being sure. Um so we're gonna move on, guys. And our next conversation is gonna be about in-person meetings. So as you guys may know, the governor has extended his order to allow public bodies to meet virtually through June, which would basically cover the remainder of our session. Um you know, certainly after that, we're gonna need to make sure that we're ready to go back in um in person for our meetings and be able to host, you know, potentially many people in the school committee room, which has its limitations. So would anybody like to provide any feedback here? Go ahead, Steve.
My only question is, why? There is no law that requires us to meet in person.
Well, once the governor's order is rescinded, public bodies do have to meet in person. There is allowance for um members to meet virtually under a certain set of conditions.
Mr. Gleason, I I ask of you, is there a law that requires us to meet in person after the emergency decree expires?
Uh, Madam Chairman, can I, may I respond?
Sure.
Yeah, I, Steve, I actually have not even studied this at this point. I was actually discussing it before the meeting with our recording secretary, and there, I think it's an ongoing ever progressing situation with these meetings. Oh, I can't answer your question. I haven't really looked into it, I'm sorry.
My understanding is that it does exist in Mass General Law, um and if anybody else wants to interject or add to. And the only reason why I know this is because any, before any of us ever dreamed of COVID and virtual meetings, we had a full-blown conversation about this matter in a school committee training. And um I remember McCar- Mr. Mercaro telling us that there were very few situations where a member of a public body could participate remotely. Um and so, I mean, we can, we can perhaps bring more clarity to the law, Steve, and and there is a, there are policies in our manual about this. But I think that, I don't know, I mean, what is your position on this, everyone? Kirk, you wanna weigh in?
Yeah, I, we, I, we were able to find Mass General Law on this issue today. And there's several layers to this and um uh found this late this afternoon, so um there there's several elements to it. Um uh so it allows for um remote participation. The Regional School District Committee must, by a simple majority, vote to allow remote participation in accordance with requirements of nine forty C M R twenty nine ten, with that vote applying to all subsequent meetings of that public body and its committees. So that's the part that basically says you have to first vote that you're gonna allow it. And then once you vote to allow it, it can then be part of um you don't have to continue to do that vote and over and over. You voted it as allowed. Remote.
Is that for an individual, Kirk, or for the whole body?
Yeah, that's the next part. Remote participation, uh this is, uh I believe, by individual. Remote participation may be permitted subject to the following procedures and restrictions. However, the Attorney General strongly encourages members of public bodies to physically attend meetings whenever possible. By pummeling nine forty C M R twenty nine ten, the Attorney General hopes to promote greater participation in government. Members of public bodies have a responsibility to ensure that remote participation in meetings is not used in a way that would defeat the purposes of Mass General Law, namely promoting transparency with regard to deliberations and decisions on which the policy is based. There's, there's a lot more content to that, and I'll be happy to share that uh with you, Madam Chair, to distribute to the committee.
Okay. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, so we're we're um at at a place where, for the first time in two years, um local, statewide, and federal guidance is basically constellating and giving everybody the same message, which is part of the reason why so many districts have um decided to lift their local mask mandate. Um we have gotten the message from our Boards of Health, from our towns, uh and we've man- uh mandated, we have lifted the masking requirement at our schools, and we are sending the message that conditions now are far more conducive to, I guess, what we can call typical behavior than they were just a couple of months ago. Um I, I, the, I don't see any reason why we need to continue to meet remotely. Is it convenient? Yes, but I don't like the notion that we are somehow subject to a different set of standards than everybody else. Frankly, I'm tired of meeting uh and 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 looking at a screen. And I want to do away with them as quickly as possible. So I can't think of any reason other than if there are uh mobility issues or health concerns um why we wouldn't be able to meet in person as a public body. Uh I would just like to think that we hold ourselves to the same standards that we voted for our kids and that so many employers are now doing for their employees um and that we're doing at a at a local and a state level. So I am in full support of going back to in-person meetings immediately.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Anybody else want to weigh in on this, Kirk?
Um there's, there's two pieces of this to bring out, and that is, one is a quorum of the body, including the chair or in the chair's absence, the person authorized to chair the meeting shall be physically present at the meeting location as required in Mass General Law. Um that's one element. And then a permissible reason for remote remote participation. If remote participation has been adopted in accordance with the law, a member of the public body shall be permitted to participate remotely in a meeting in accordance with the procedures described only if physical attendance would be unreasonably difficult.
Thank you. Uh Amy.
Yeah, so it sounds like if we make a decision to meet in person, then it's not as if there is an option to log in via Zoom once the meetings resume in person. We're either in person or we're remote.
Well, there's like, there's just that one caveat, that if we as a public body agree to grant, um you know, one, two, uh less than a quorum of the membership to meet remotely, they can. Does that make sense? But a quorum plus me has to be present, or whoever the chair is. A quorum including the chair.
Okay. Thanks.
Oh, go ahead, Joe.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh just to point out from a historical standpoint, and again, this is something that, oops, I was talking to our reporting secretary about before the meeting, that historically, uh in the Commonwealth, it was not unusual for a member of a body politic to participate remotely in deliberations. There was a restriction on voting. They could participate in deliberations, but they can't vote. So really, it it sounds to me two things. One is, is that I think there may be something to what Mr. Rubenstein is saying, because if the Attorney General is just saying, we're encouraging you, we strongly recommend it, that means it's not the law, but or a regulation, but regardless of that, I think the only difference that the uh that the regulation is providing now is that anybody who is remote and cannot attend physically in person would have the ability to vote on any particular matter before the body. So um I I I don't disagree with what Mr. Horace is saying, but at the same time, I I think that, you know, looking at our court system and with the, you know, with the with the relaxations of the the masking mandates and the COVID mandates, what we're seeing, at least in the court system, is that they're keeping some of the remote aspects to um uh hearings for our court. So I I don't think I would be so inclined to say we almost attend in person. I would be inclined to embrace the regulations and look, those who can attend in person are encouraged to do so. We have to have a quorum here, but if you have physical disabilities that prohibit you from being, I would be fully supportive of allowing anybody in that particular case to participate remotely.
Thanks, Joe. Anyone else want to weigh in here? This is obviously not pressing, we're not voting on anything. This is just a conversation. Yeah, Karen.
Uh I just, I fully agree with with what Mike said. I think, you know, uh and again, barring somebody who has a specific um physical reason that they can't be in person, that is a different issue. But in general, you know, we we just voted that, you know, we're going to unmask in schools, that the distancing has been removed, all those pieces. And while it's convenient for me to run upstairs uh and jump on a meeting and not have to drive, I think we need to model what we're asking our students to do and our teachers to do. And that would be meeting in person, if at all feasible for for members of the committee.
Thanks, Karen. Amy?
Yeah, so I'm in favor of um meeting in person for all the reasons that have already been stated, but um in the event that we will have a member or more than one member who is participating remotely, um I think that was the problem that we had the last time we tried to do, you know, an in-person meeting with some people logging in remotely. Um and so has anybody revisited the technology that would be required to make sure that whoever's logging in remotely can fully participate in the meetings and, you know?
So this is something that our administration would need to ensure and perhaps um study. I I know that Chi probably has to be involved in that conversation. So that would be something we'd leave to you, Kirk, yeah?
Sorry, took me a minute to get my button there. Um yeah, we'd have to look at that. And and we have looked at that. There's some difficulties with it. So um if we have the ability to use um our phone and the 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 spider phone that we have, there's a speakerphone and be able to then have the mic close by, because there's a provision that says the um, remote person has to be audible to the entire audience. Um, and then, uh, continue the recording with the stream yard. So if that, if that person is remote wants to see the rest of the panel, they would have to, uh, log into the stream to see that. The awkward part of that is there is a delay. So there's a six to 10 second delay between what you hear over your phone to what you would see on your screen. That would make that somewhat awkward. Um, right now, I don't have a better solution to that. Um, in terms of, of how to present that, other than, um, you know, if the participant was in, um, if, if, if there was a computer there and a participant was in, say, via Zoom or another service like it. But the problem for that person would be picking up the audible sound of the meeting at the same time. So, um, there, there's going to be complexities to that that are, the technical complexities to that that would need to be worked out. There are, there's equipment and software that can be purchased, uh, that would make that seamless. We currently don't own, own that. Um, and from what I understand, that would be an expensive endeavor to a dollar amount. I could not tell you the dollar amount to that.
Rich? Uh, you're a mute, Rich.
I lowered my hand, but I did turn off the mute. Sorry. Uh, I have some ideas around that, Kirk, so we could talk perhaps. I haven't made up my mind yet, so I'm really looking forward to seeing the documentation that Kirk has and other people have. So, um, at this point, that's, that's what I'm looking for.
Mike?
Yeah, I'm, I don't want to belabor this. Uh, but i- if, if anything good happened from remote teaching, uh, it was how to pull this off without a delay. There was two computers. One was, one would be basically a leader's computer that is logged into Zoom and is leading the presentations. Another one is, uh, focusing on the audience, right? The rest of the school committee. And then there would be a, uh, a Bluetooth speaker. I mean, that would be the basic way to do it. And it doesn't cost much. There is maybe a quarter to a half second delay. Um, and unless I'm missing something, it's pretty straightforward.
But is it because the, everybody else's can't log into Zoom? Is that the difference, Mike? This is a broadcast and not a Zoom. Not everybody who's gonna be watching would be-
The six second delay would, would, would render that impractical, I think. Uh, especially in, um, in, 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 in having any kinds of, uh, deliberation. Um, and that's why you would want it to be sort of zoomed in. But, but anyways, as Rich said, we can kind of talk about this offline.
Yeah. I was gonna say, um, all we need to do is troubleshoot this in a room with some pretty basic equipment. So I, I mean, that definitely has to happen in June. So I think that this should be something that we get onto our radar, Kirk, that even if she just wants to, like, have a few of us come in and, and role play a little bit, um, we need to figure that out. Uh, I can also, in the meantime, reach out to Mike Macaro and ask him about the, uh, legal piece, looking at, um, the commissioner, or excuse me, the governor's order, Mass General Law and our policy manual.
Yep. And, 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 uh, we're sending that to you, uh, Leah, so you can distribute that to the committee.
Okay, thank you. All right. If, if everybody's good there, um, clearly that's not happening for our next meeting, or maybe even one after that, but stay tuned because it is coming. Once we figure it out. Sharon, did you have something to add?
Sorry, uh, to be late and with the question here, but I'm just wondering, space in that room has always been tight. If we were to have a large crowd of people that wanted to observe the meeting in person, can we accommodate that in that space? I'm just thinking, like, y- y- we've used restrictions and, and things are feeling a lot more normal right now, but i- in any space, in, in any of our buildings, we s- still pretty much have a limit, you know, like the class is only as big as it is. So you've got a set number of students and adults in that room, and that's as many people as are typically in that room. If we're holding a public meeting and so that meeting can be open to as many people we as want to join, then we have to accommodate all those people. Y- yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
So then we are, is there potential for us packing-
There have been meetings in the past where that, that room gets very, very, very crowded. Um, and, you know, we have anticipated crowds and therefore moved our meetings to different locations that could accommodate more people. It's hard to predict, although maybe not really. And so we would have to be mindful of that and maybe even consider moving it from the school committee room altogether. So that's, that's all on the table. Let's just say that. I think that, you know, in addition to putting school of choice study on your plate, Kirk, we need, you know, in-person meeting study to be kind of top priority at this point.
Yeah, one question I want, uh, to have investigated also, and this is a good question for Mike, is we have the office space directly across the hall from the school committee room, uh, that is our, uh, pupil and personal services room, uh, that we could utilize that office space and set up rows of chairs and, and things like that and have a mobile screen in there for, uh, an audience. Uh, the question, i- and then as long as the doors are open and those types of things, does that meet the open meeting law requirement of allowing meaningful participation? I think we'd have to get some feedback on that.
Okay.
But to your point, if we have a meeting where we're expecting a significantly, significantly large group of people, we would relocate it to, say, the, the Flore Sawyer Gymnasium, uh, for that purpose.
Okay, so I'll talk to Mike and you can perhaps talk to Chi about moving this forward.
Yeah, it sounds like a fine idea to put on the list of, uh, MSBA project of, uh, having a, a meeting space that can accommodate a large group of people for the future. So, uh, I'll put that on my checklist as well.
Great. Okay, everybody, let's go forward. Uh, our next conversation is going to be about administration salary ranges. And so I can kind of spearhead this. Um, Mary and I, as the Personnel Subcommittee, took this up because it is part of our charge. And this is something that needs to be reviewed annually. So Anne Marie came to our Subcommittee meeting and she provided for us, uh, the chart that you have in your meeting materials that, um, shifts the ranges just a little bit. Um, so what we are proposing is that we adopt, at a, at the next meeting, we'll be voting um, on the salary ranges as proposed here in this chart. I just want to add to it that the ranges that are being proposed only really had to shift for the business manager position. The rest of our administrators are currently within the ranges. And I will also add that the ranges were determined by Anne Marie, um, looking at, uh, the schools that Desi considers us similar to. They include Bedford, Holliston, Lynnfield, Melrose, Milton, Needham, Sharon, Wakefield, Wayland, and Wellesley. These are our DART schools. Um, these are the schools that they consider us similar to based upon, um, a bunch of different measures, including MCAS scores, enrollment, um, economic, economically disadvantaged people, L, uh, English language learner numbers, et cetera. Anne Marie also used an analysis of the schools that we are in the Aspet Valley Regional, or excuse me, in the Aspet Valley Collaborative with. They include Aspet Regional Vocational School, Auburn, Berlin, Berlin, Boylston, Boylston, Hudson, Grafton, Marlborough, Maynard, Milbury, Northborough, uh, Northborough, Southborough, which is Algonquin, Shrewsbury, Southborough, and Westborough. So the ranges that you see proposed here are similar across all of these other districts, and that's why she has brought, or rather, maintained most of them and created an increase in just a couple. Uh, so go ahead, Amy, question?
Yeah, I'm, I I think I'm a little confused because this is showing a proposed range, but we're not, you're talking about a shift and I don't see the shifts.
So the only, the only one that currently in this particular proposal, the one that we changed was the business manager position. And Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, the increase was to, um, raise the, the floor $10,000.
Right.
Um, there were a couple of other ones that were about $1,000 beneath. Um, so the total difference in this proposal is about $14,000.
So what we're being asked to do is just approve the proposed salary ranges and you tasked Anne Marie with coming up with what those should be based on the comparable schools that Desi defines for us.
Yeah.
Okay, but my second question is, why is the Aspet Valley-
Collaborative?
Collaborative, a comparison and not the Minuteman?
So-
I got this incorrectly, but like-
Minuteman? What do you mean Minuteman?
Well-
The Minuteman schools?
Like our, we belong to the Minuteman Regional Votec, like, we, I guess maybe I'm thinking about this incorrectly, but I know there's like an Aspet Regional Votech, and there's a Minuteman, and I know geographically we're closer to Aspet, but our students are part of the Minuteman system. Am I thinking about this wrong? I see-
Yeah, like, so, Minuteman, you probably wouldn't want to compare us to, say, Lexington, which is in the Minuteman loop. Um, so, you know, Anne Marie just had to find two kind of cohorts of schools that she could create similar ranges for. And that, that is what she chose to compare us to. Um, Mary, you wanted to weigh in?
Mm-hmm, and proximity, um, these are more local, and these are schools, um, then in the Aspet Collaborative, um, our superintendent, probably assistant superintendent too, meet with the other superintendents, meet with the assistant superintendents. So this is our local collaborative. And it, anyway, so that's, it's oftentimes that we're using the Aspet Collaborative for information, for comparison. And also, we thought that to have the DART, the ones that, um, that Desi looks at all those factors and then says, these are the, the districts that look like you, um, and that you should compare yourself to, to have that plus, where'd you go? Oh, um, what is more local, um, seem to be even a wider body of information for us to take a look at. Um, so that's, these are the, these are the districts. These are the DART districts.
And because they felt a little random, that's why she also overlaid the Aspet Valley Collaborative. Um, Joe, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, as a former vocational technical school district committee member, I, I'm getting a kick out of Ms. Cohen's questions. I, I think she's, um, uh, confusing Aspet Regional Votech High School with the Aspet Educational Collaborative, uh, two separate entities altogether, um, which I think is why she brought it. And again, Amy, I, I don't mean to be presumptuous. I apologize if I'm being such, but yeah, I ask, I think you're confusing Aspet Votech with the Aspet Educational Collaborative.
Amy, I'll let you speak for yourself.
You're right. That's why I asked. Thank you.
Great. Let's see. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Yeah, Mary?
I just want to go back to Kirk's comment earlier in terms of, um, the competition for positions and, um, and how, you know, it's, it's also difficult to find highly qualified, uh, people for the positions. And, and whereas our teachers in the classroom are, you know, the most important aspect of direct instruction with the students, if we don't have a strong infrastructure, if we don't have strong administrators and central office, then the whole district is weakened and that weakens what the teachers can do with the students. So this is money extremely well spent. And, um, and so I, I just hope that the committee will take a look at this. We had Anne Marie come back, um, twice, and also Anne Marie sided with some of this information last year. And then we, for the Personnel Subcommittee, but we were all of a sudden, um, looking for a new superintendent. So that got put on, on the back burner and, and we had a great outcome in terms of welcoming Kirk. Um, so that's why it came back this year. So Anne Marie's done quite a bit of work on this. And, and we've vetted it, and then we bring it to you for your recommendation.
So we're not going to vote on this, um, to repeat myself here. We're not voting on this tonight. This is just for your information. Uh, we will be taking this up for a vote next time. Um, are there any other clarifying questions or anything that you'd like us to bring more information on? Everybody's okay? Amy?
Yeah, sorry, I couldn't find the button. So, uh, do we need to add a line item for the? Didn't we just get an update about a-
A business manager?
Listen, director of Business and Operations or something?
Kirk, you want to respond to that?
Yeah, that's a support level position, Ms. Cohen. The, um, i- i- is not included in these, uh, positions that come before the school committee. It's a reclassification of the budget analyst position.
He's just trying to change the name of that position, and that's never been a part of the salary range approval process?
Exactly. That's correct.
So that won't, that won't appear?
I just, I, I'm just trying to be transparent and informative to the school committee and, and showing you my intentions.
Great. All right, everybody. So, uh, if there are no other questions, we're gonna move on to the main event, really, and that is the FY23 budget vote. Um, perhaps we can start with a motion and then head into discussion. Mike, would you like to take that up?
Um, sure. I will move to adopt the FY23 budget in the amount of sixty-two million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars, representing a five point two five percent increase from FY22.
Um, actually, can I hit pause really quickly? I think that we wanted to take this, um, a motion at a time simply because, uh, one of our members needs to abstain from the- the salary line items.
Right.
Um, so Mike, would you mind resc- um, rescinding that motion?
Sure, I rescind the motion.
Okay, and so just so that the, the committee knows, we're gonna take, we're gonna adopt the budget through three separate motions, because Brett should abstain from the first one, which is about the salaries, because he has a conflict of interest. All right, so go ahead, Mike.
Okay, sorry. So I'm, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion for the first piece, which is, um, the salaries and benefits. I'll move to adopt the FY23 budget line items for salaries and benefits in the amount of million, two hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
And I will second that. Is there any discussion on the salary line items?
Leah, if you can lean into your microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Joe?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
And Brett?
I'm staying.
Thank you. Uh, Steve?
Yes.
And Sean?
Yes.
Great. So the motion passes. And now we can move on to, um, all other non-salary and operational and assessment costs. Mike?
Sure, I'll move to adopt, um, all the other non-salary operational assessment costs in the amount of eleven million, nine hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars in the FY23 budget.
I'll second that. Thanks, Steve. Any discussion? All right, we'll move to the vote. Let's go with Sean first.
Got me off guard. Yes.
Sorry, Steve. Steve, did you say yes?
No, I'm sorry, because Mary had her bar, her box filled, yes.
Thank you. Uh, Brett?
Yes.
Sharon? Sharon?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. And Joe?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Leah, who seconded that?
I did. I think I beat Steve to it. So now we will, um. So I'm going to pause really quickly. So Alita, you have this third motion for us to adopt the entire budget? And Brett needs to abstain from that one as well?
Um, I, I I don't think so, Pat.
No.
I only copied the exact same motions that were made on the budget last year.
Go ahead, Kirk. Yeah.
Madam Chair, a couple of things. No, I believe he can, can vote on the entire budget. But Ms. Maroney also has a quick update for the committee on E and D certification that is pertinent to this third motion. So if we can afford her an opportunity, I would appreciate that.
Sure.
Today, I, I was in communications with the Department of Local Services at the state. And they're still working on our E and D certification. They've had it since at least the first of November. And in order for us to proceed with this vote tonight, we're going to put the $1.2 million of E and D as a revenue source as a placeholder in the budget in order for it to be voted tonight. You told me that this is acceptable and when it is certified, hopefully, I would say within a day or two, we will be able to just re-vote the amount. Does anybody have any questions about that?
Does this interfere with the 45-day requirement, Pat, that our select boards require or that the regional agreement requires?
I don't believe so. I was expecting to have it by the end of day today. I don't know why it was so delayed. But if I get it tomorrow and it's in the next meeting, I think it should be fine. Because last year, I don't know if you remember, we did the same thing. Because we certified late, we had to vote to re-approve the 1.22, I think it was 1.22 million back in May.
And that was well after the March?
That was well after the vote, correct.
Rich, do you have a question? I think you're on mute, Rich.
I did it again. I lowered my hand, didn't you? That's number, that number's not expected to change, right? But you still, we still need that checkmark from the state.
Correct.
Any other questions?
No, I just, I was just wondering if there might be a material change at the budget, but it doesn't seem like it to me.
Yeah, it's unlikely. Go ahead, Kirk.
So Ms. Maroney, if I'm correct, then the motion, the third motion to put forward should include language that says it's acknowledged that the $1.2 million in E and D for funding the budget, it currently sits as a placeholder while we anticipate certification of those funds from the state.
You call it state certification, Pat?
It's called, yes, the certification on excess and deficiency.
Mike, do you mind if I take it?
Nope, go for it.
Okay, so I'm going to move to adopt the total FY23 budget in the amount of $62,225,818, a 5.25% increase, acknowledging the E and D line item is currently a placeholder as we await state certification.
Second.
Any discussion? Mike?
Yeah, I'm just going to take a moment to acknowledge Superintendent Downing's role in this and really tip my hat to the manner in which she navigated the entire budget building process. It's such a huge part of what he does as a superintendent and, and helping to build it and supporting it is such a big part of what we do as a school committee. You know, when I was thinking about it, it wasn't, it wasn't simply transparency that defined the process. It was proactive transparency. It wasn't waiting until questions arose to answer those questions. It was anticipating those questions. And it effectively invited partnership on so many levels. And it preemptively answered almost all of my questions, if not all of my questions. So I feel like the process earned substantial trust on behalf of the towns and the community. There was sharing of information on multiple communication channels. And this feels like a really healthy and refreshing shift in how we usher in each budget season. I hope, hope that it represents how we will continue this process moving forward. So again, just wanted to acknowledge this. I know that this was a, a long budget season. It was a challenging one. Every year is challenging, but this felt like a really welcome shift. So thank you for that.
Rich?
I just want to echo what Mike said. I do think I don't know anybody that hadn't heard the presentation that was, that was, you know, created, Kirk doesn't do it alone. He created it with his team. But he delivered it very effectively and I, I can think of all the people that I know that are, you know, good nudges, right? They're, they're asking those hard questions from all of the different towns that I try to build relationships with. And they all said something of the variety of, wow, he answered more in the last 30 minutes, hour, whatever it was than that I've been looking for, for years. And I think it's because it was present, it was the way it was presented. It was the completeness. It was the anticipation like Mike mentioned. I, I'll speak that for myself. I spent, I spent a lot of time trying to figure this out, talking to different people. And, you know, I think it kind of connected a lot of dots for me, confirmed a lot of my, what I thought. And I think, I think at the bottom line, Mike put his finger on it. It's built, it built trust, right? I think there's people that are still frustrated with the cost. But they understand that there was a credible process that we went through to, to, to reach that point. And so I think it's a real feather in the cap for the entire administration. And, and one for, for Kirk in particular, at the way he delivered it, right? There was, I just didn't, there was clarifying questions, but there wasn't like, you know, throwing up their hands, like I just don't get it. So, you know, bravo.
Thanks, Rich. Go ahead, Mary.
So I, I want to echo what, what Mike and Rich said and applaud Kirk's leadership. This is something that in the superintendent's search, we saw that the time and effort and knowledge in terms of budget process and inclusion of all the important, you know, constituents in terms of the budget, which is really everyone that, that Kirk had done. And he's brought that to Neshoba and it's to our, it's, you know, absolutely to our benefit. And so I, I just want to applaud that and thank you so much and your whole leadership team. Pat and, and everyone who has been part of the budget and the budget subcommittee. So this really has been collaborative work. And then in terms of the, the, the timing of our vote, I, I can, I've figured out that the March 15th is a safe date to have 45 days before the town, the town meeting, which is the first Monday in May. But I, I have some figures on that and it's probably to our benefit to have in the regional agreement, what is actually the law, the 45 days. Or, or we could say, you know, in parentheses, sometimes that's, that would be, you know, approximately March 15th because as of tonight, we have 54 more days. Now I think we've covered it in terms of what we're doing and about the E and D and saying that we're waiting for the certification. But I don't think to have to tie us to the March 15th is, is necessary when, what we have to do is figure the 45 days. But maybe put that in that historically it's been March 15th. And so I'll bring this to the regional agreement amendment committee next week and then all of this will come back to school committee. But I just wanted to explain it to you right now, so that everybody would kind of have an understanding on this. And I believe that's why the March 15th is there because it's safe. It's, you know, it, there's plenty, there's plenty of room for, even if May 1st were the first Monday, there's enough time, but it could be all the way to May, whatever it is, 6th. I had this figured out before. And so there's a bunch more days that never can tell. We might need to have at some point. So that, that's my little.
Yeah, thanks for that, Mary. I appreciate that. Um. All right. So anybody else on this last motion here? I think we're ready to vote. All right, I will start. Catch nobody off guard. I vote yes. Joe?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Okay. Budget has been passed. Thank you, everyone. Now, our next matter of business is the negotiated agreement between the NRSD and the NREA. We have in Neshoba, two bargaining units. One is called Unit A and that includes the teaching, teaches, teachers, nurses and counselors and, you know, a handful of other people. And the Unit C is those members of our staff who work in our offices and our paraprofessionals and work in our food services department, et cetera. So the subcommittee for this, the negotiation subcommittee of the school committee met with the NREA with a handful of other professionals from our district and we were able to bring a contract proposal to the full school committee. And it is my pleasure to announce that the school committee has approved that contract as has the NREA. See Joe's hand. Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Am I losing my mind or we, are we not required to vote on the ratification of this contract in open session? Isn't the public have a right to know who voted in favor, who made me oppose to this contract? I, I believe that the vote has to be an open session.
So Attorney McCarthy said that it didn't, but
Then I stand corrected.
I mean, I can, I can defer to Kirk or anyone else and mean, I'm sure that there's no harm in it. Go ahead, Kirk.
I, I have seen it done both ways. Madam Chair, as you got guidance from Attorney McCardo, it does not. I have seen it done where the vote that was taken executive section is then replicated for the benefit of the public, the way Mr. Gleason just described, Attorney Gleason, excuse me.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, and just, just to be clear, that's, if my memory serves me correctly, that's the way that we've done in the past. The, the latter where we voted for it and then we did sort of a pro forma vote in the public session.
If the committee, I mean, there's clearly no harm in it. So if the committee is amenable to that, we could do that. Joe, is that something you're interested in? Go ahead, Joe.
I, I sorry, I have to keep lowering that hand. Yeah, but you raise a very interesting, small but interesting point from my perspective because again, and I, I ask that this be on a future agenda at some point. We have our agenda as, you know, we have the designations IO, AR and what have you. And I don't know about other people, but I generally fall back on those AR and IO designations quite, quite a bit. So I, I, I would, you know, my feeling is, is that I, I do think it's good practice to, you know, whatever we do in executive session, we ratify that in open session because I think minimally the public has a right to know who voted in favor of this contract and who was opposed to this contract. That being said, again, the, the small point of issue for me is the designation on the agenda because the agenda does say this is only for information only, but I, I don't think we're held to that, but I, again, it's kind of been a thorn in my side of late because I tend to rely heavily on whether it's going to be a vote on something or it's just going to be information only. But that being said, Madam Chair, I would actually move to approve the collective buying agreement with both Unit A and Unit C.
Would somebody like to second that?
Second.
Second.
Oh, I think Steve got that one. Good job, Steve. I don't imagine there's much discussion to be had here, but feel free to raise your hand. Go ahead, Steve.
I only, I only want, when you, you know, when you describe what you're describing, you just say that it was how the vote was in the executive session. I don't think there's any violation of executive session rules there, then it was a unanimous vote. That's all.
Well, I mean, there's a motion on the floor to illuminate that. Any other discussion? Kirk?
Am I out of order to chime in here?
I don't think so.
Okay. I just, I wanted to use this as an opportunity to thank the leadership team and the negotiation team for both the school committee, but also for the NREA. I thought the, the tone, the conversation in the negotiations session was highly respectful. I thought it was collaborative. And it sets the tone for when we get into three-year contract negotiations beginning the end of May. So I just wanted the public to, to, to know and to also recognize our, our colleagues in the NREA for their good work and that the NRA did pass this contract overwhelmingly as well.
Great. Any other comments or discussion before we vote? All right, well, let's take that vote. Joe, you get to go first.
Yes, Madam Chairman.
I say yes. Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Amy? Did I lose Amy? There you are. Amy, what did you say?
My screen froze. Sorry. Yes.
Thank you. Mary?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Uh, Brett?
I'm staying.
Thank you, sir. Steve?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
So it is indeed unanimous. So thank you, everybody, for your hard work. We are moving toward nine o'clock. Is the committee amenable to wrapping up our agenda here? We have our student report. They've been waiting so patiently. Everybody okay? All right. So Sonia and Dan, it is your turn. What can you tell us?
Do you want me to go first or you, you want to go first?
Yeah, Dan, you go first.
Okay. So first of all, just recently, you know, the stuff that's been happening in Ukraine and Russia, obviously. They set up a red, what's it called? Red Cross station in the school cafeteria and you can donate to Ukraine for like care packages and they give you a little ribbon here. I have this one. But I got, I think it's a pretty nice thing. And then there's also the whole masking thing. Obviously, there's varying opinions. And in some of my classes, there's more people masking than others because like we have some teachers that prefer that you mask, but obviously there's no requirement. So like, for example, my German teacher, she's pregnant and she prefers that we mask up in her class. And so a lot of the students will willingly mask up in that class.
All right. Yeah, thanks, Dan. A few other things to catch you guys up on. We had, I think this was mentioned, but our eighth grade tour, they came up to the high school and we had a lot of great volunteers show them around and give them a little insight on how the high school is. We also had our reading day at Luther Burbank. So a bunch of high school students came, went and read to the students. And I saw pictures and I heard about it. It sounded like a really sweet experience. That Ms. Speck showed us this in her slideshow, but the, it's really exciting to see the decisions of after high school starting to be posted up. It's feeling like more real now and it's, it's definitely exciting to see where all your, like the schools that your peers are going to. The senior banquet is starting to be planned, but that's more of a parent thing. But it's, that's also an exciting thing coming around. Last night, the hockey game went really well. game went really well. We got a six-three win for Neshoba, um, and a great turnout. The Wolf Pack really showed up. Um, and uh, as a student council, we're getting into some plans for our lip dub, which we weren't able to do the last few years. Um, so we're really excited about that. And then um, like Dan mentioned, the masking has been really exciting and um, generally respectful. Um, it's really affected the energy at school. There's a lot more excitement and people are happy to see each other smile, even if there's a student like opting to stay masking, um. They still get to feel that joy from just seeing other people's smiles, um. And so far, it's feeling pretty safe. So that is good. Um, and then uh, a few clubs like our social justice club and our international club are making videos for the professional development coming up, so getting some of that student voice, um, right to the teachers, which is also really exciting and kind of stuff that we talked about at the new building conference. So it's exciting to see stuff that we talked about there being seen, um, now. That's pretty much what we got.
Awesome. Thanks so much, guys. That's so interesting, all of it. Go ahead, Kirk.
Ms. Viverina, I just, I want to take this as an opportunity to, to take a moment to embarrass and highlight Sonia. She was one of the fourteen students that represented the student body at the visioning sessions for the building project, did an outstanding job as all the other students did and, uh, uh, really, I had a chance to bond with all the students and it was funny walking through the school today, seeing a few of them and they're like, hey, Kirk! You know, so it was, uh, we got a kick out of it as, as we were going through. So Sonia, thank you for, for the time that you put in there, but my thanks to you is, is, uh, you are a representative of, of the fourteen of you that all came. So, uh, spread the word on that as well.
I will.
Awesome. Thanks, guys, so much. You can definitely stick around for our subcommittee reports or you can head home, uh, home, you are home. You can head out, probably have lots of homework or other things. Uh, so let's move on to subcommittee reports. Uh, we can start with budget and warrant. Steve, any report?
Uh, no. Please keep in mind that budget and warrant meets before the second meeting of the month. And therefore, uh, we will have a report, um, at that time, at our next meeting. We always get, we always get the operations reports, uh, I mean, from the previous month at our meeting, um, two days before the second meeting of the month. Thank you.
Got it. And communication?
Uh, we are scheduled to meet tomorrow. We are going to kind of review the results of the communication survey that went out a few weeks ago. Um, we received three hundred and thirty responses and, um, we'll kind of dive into it and provide a report to the committee at the next, uh, meeting.
That's exciting. Thanks, Amy. Cool building committee.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, in regards to the school building committee, there is not a lot to report this evening. Um, we met February eighth, our next meeting is, uh, next Tuesday. I'll see, have significantly more to report back to the committee at our next meeting in, uh, March, but, um, uh, what has transpired as the superintendent has astutely pointed out between February eighth and today was we did have our visioning sessions and there's not a lot that I can add to the visiting sessions that hasn't already been provided by Superintendent Downing. Um, I, I will just make a couple of comments. It was very well attended. Uh, there was a significant amount of participation. As Superintendent Downing pointed out, I was, uh, there only as an observer. I had the pleasure of, uh, Ms. Masterson's company at the, as Superintendent Downing called the bullpen table. So we didn't participate, but we observed. And my observation was that, um, the visiting session probably could be described thusly, it was on what level it was interesting, it was fascinating. And it actually bordered on a indulgent and absurd. And, and I don't mean that in a negative way. Um, a lot of what was presented was, it was sort of, um, I, I think when it comes to school design and the future of public education or any education in this country is that no idea is a bad one. And I think that, uh, Dr. Locker has an immense body of, of, of experience and information and some of what he presented was, was interesting, some of it was uh, frankly absurd. And I think that, um, I think as we move on, we'll get more insight from what transpired at the visiting session from our, um, our architects who, who were there in, at all this visiting session along with the OPM. And Craig Olson from Kesselboos actually recorded the entire event, so it's all been memorialized for future generations. Uh, I do want to play one, I want to point out, I mean, Superintendent Downing has pointed out that Ms. Park was there, Ms. Nicholson was there, uh, Dr. McGuire was there, the, the host of other people who was there. But there was one individual I want to just, uh, recognize especially, and that is, um, Principal Joel Bates. And, and he was absolutely, yeah, he, I say, it, it was a fun time to begin with, but Joel really added to the, to the, to the fun. Um, he has a rapier-like wit, don't let his quiet demeanor fool you. He is hilarious and he kept us all in stitches. So thank you very much, Madam Chairman. That's all I have to say.
Great, thanks, Joe. Good summary. Uh, the personnel subcommittee, uh, as you know, has been working on the salary range information. We're also continuing to sharpen our professional development tools. We'll be looking to speak with you next meeting to get you ready for the so-called formative assessment of our superintendent evaluation process. So that is more to come. Policy?
Uh, no report tonight. We will have some items for our next meeting. We're meeting on the twenty-first.
Great, thank you. Um, and just as an addendum to the policy subcommittee, uh, we have policy D that is still pending for its second reading. We were waiting on some clarification that Mary was, was finally able to track down from MASC that we will incorporate through the policy subcommittee next time and bring policy D back to you, uh, with some clarifications. More on that later. Audit advisory.
We are trying to find a time to meet to, uh, review the budget process with Ms. Maroney and just coordinating schedules.
Dear J, any report?
Dear J, met, um, last week on Wednesday, um, they are working on defining their vision and also creating common definitions, um, of the different, um, terms or, or things that they're working on so that when they speak of, or when we speak of, say, for example, equitable practice, that we are all on the same page and, and thinking the same thing, um, just as an example. Um, they are also working on reviewing the feedback from the subcommittees, um, that we had given to them a few weeks ago and, um, looking for themes in the feedback and finding ways to support um, each of those subcommittees, um, moving forward.
Great, thanks, Sharon. The, our triple A C.
So we haven't met, uh, but we will be meeting next Wednesday, March sixteenth at seven o'clock, and that should be our final meeting. And, um, so then I'll let you know about that after it happens.
Awesome, thanks, Mary. And to CPAC?
No report.
Awesome. Um, I will say that CPAC is scheduled to present to the, uh, school committee. We're thinking on April, the, for that April, um, meeting, we only have one, April sixth, I believe, so we can look forward to that. Items for next agenda. And if you don't mind, I'm just going to take a second to pull up the planning calendar. So we have, uh, quite a full plate, uh, largely because we have the superintendent's mid-cycle review or the formative assessment and a little bit of a tiny little workshop that Mary and I are going to put on prior to that. And that formative assessment that Kirk is going to offer is ultimately his entry plan and presentation, which is very exciting. Um, and there's a handful of other matters. Um, school choice, we probably also need salary ranges. Oh, it's already there. I wanted to put policy D, second reading, because Karen will probably be ready for that.
I think that's up there, too.
Did I double it up? Okay, I'll delete it. Anything else that I'm missing?
I was updating the same time you were, Leah.
Oh, thanks, Alita. Uh, Kirk?
Um, I, I might recommend to you, Madam Chair, that we look at advancing the school choice hearing vote uh, back in meeting only because the entry plan is going to be quite lengthy. Um, and look, with the evaluation workshop and the other items, we're going to have a very full agenda that night.
Okay, so bump that to April sixth.
That's just my recommendation as well.
I think that's fine. If you say that your presentation is long, we believe you.
Yeah.
Uh, anything else you guys want to see on there? All right, if anything comes up over the next, um, or anything jumps out of your mind, just shoot me an email. Sure.
I, I have a question.
Okay.
The, um, does the school committee have to do any planning with regard to the public forum for the school building committee? It's happening at the end of March, or is that just completely a school building committee?
It's unrelated, it's just a function of the process now.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, anything else for the good of the order? I'm happy to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I think that was Rich and then Amy, Alita. Rich moved. Um, and so let's take the vote. Joe?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sharon? Yes. Steve?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Sean?
Yes.
Great. Thanks, everybody, so much. See you next time.
Not everyone.